My card, I don't need this today.
From Tim Casey on that question?
I did, he. He seemed to think that it was probably best if we just did it.
Be some.
Then he also said. Also said, I'm gonna, I'm gonna send you.
Might need some additional. If we want additional exploration.
You're the last piece he sent to me.
Alright. Kind of what I've thought. To investment, but there's different ways to accomplish that.
Hey. I think it's a gray area we're gonna have to really look into.
Dennis, how are you?
Good.
That's so true of them.
I call this a special meeting for the Town Council of Breckenridge to order at 8:00 PM. It is Friday, September seventeenth, roll call.
It's eight AM.
What did I say?
Eight PM. Okay.
All the same.
Ms. Sade, here, Mr. Carl, and here, Mr. Bergeron, here, Ms. Owens, here, Mr. Kuhn, here, Ms. Gila, Mayor Mamula.
Yes, approval of the gender, Rick, as it stands, I says. Alright, well, welcome, everybody. The purpose of today's meeting is sort of to catch up with the council after the long Tuesday meeting. This will be strictly a work session for the council, so we're not going to take any public comment this morning. There will be a chance for a public comment again on the twenty-eighth when we have our next council meeting, so, you know, take whatever notes you can and we did not have time afterwards, after taking five hours of public comment last Tuesday, we didn't have time to really discuss amongst ourselves where, you know, everybody's pretty tired at that point, so. So we're gonna take this opportunity in public to go over some things that we heard and sort of discuss where we want to go. The way, the way legislation works at this level is we have a first reading, we can always make some minor modifications between first and second reading. Some things are a little too broad to modify between two readings, so that would maybe be something that was handled later as an amendment, but that's sort of what we're talking about today, so with that, Rick.
Thank you, Mayor, so. You know, staff did feel it was important and we appreciate the council taking the time to come together because if we are gonna make any changes between to the proposed ordinance, we need to be discussing those now before second reading in it, and we do think that there were have been some points brought up that the council should consider to see. A couple of things I'd like to accomplish today, number one, are there things that we can put into the ordinance for a second reading? And number two, are there things that may warrant a further consideration that would probably come down the road in the form of either amending the ordinance and making changes within, you know, whatever, sixty to ninety days after the ordinance takes effect. Some of these are what I'll call low hanging fruit, I think, a little easier to do, and then I think some require a little broader discussion on the part of the council. So Shannon put together a memo with some of our thoughts on there, you've all had an opportunity to look at that. You know, there, the first part of this has some discussion items, but I want to kind of skip over those because I think those are ones that may involve a little more discussion towards the end. And go to four bullets that we've labeled exemptions on here. So. These are things that, that we think that, I mean, not we think, these are things that we heard. We not only heard from people talking, but we've seen them on numerous occasions in the written communication, and I know you have because you've been reading those things also. So for the purposes of the people that are here, I'll just briefly describe the four bullets we're talking about. How do we handle any exemptions for transfers of a license as a result of the death of the owner or if they want to make transfer to a family member or as part of a divorce or something like that, we know those things come up. Also, how do we deal with a transfer when it's a fractional ownership? And maybe one person out of four wants to sell their share? And do we want to look at any type of exemption when this goes into effect for those buildings that, those places that have an active building permit or a home that was under contract to sell at the time the ordinance went into effect? And then we have this issue of the ten thirty-one exchanges, so. I mean, we probably, I'm not gonna, I mean, we're, we've asked some people, we think that it's not that absolute, we think it's investment property for investment property. And you can, you know, an investment property doesn't have to be short term, it can be long term also. So I don't know on that one yet, and we, and if you want us to get more information, we can, or or I don't know how many units we're talking about, maybe it's not worth the trouble and we just include it as an exemption, but that's up to you, so.
So let's, let's just handle these one by one, how does everybody feel about this, you know, family, inter-family transfer?
At death.
Death or divorce, you know, circumstances that it's, you know.
I don't think we would write it that it had to be at death because I think people may want to make that transfer while they're still alive.
Sure.
And pass it on to their kids or.
Are we saying immediate family? How are we defining family?
I would say, I mean, immediate family.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
At death, down to kids?
Right, I mean, it could be prior to that, too, you can, you know. I mean, transferring your property to your kids is, I think, okay, you know.
I don't know if I want to get into that kind of detail, though, because like I, what if there's like some kind of scenario where somebody doesn't have kids and they still want to leave it to somebody, are we going to say, no, you can't leave it because you don't have any kids?
So I think you would, like, in the case of a will.
Yeah.
Right, I think that would stand as stated in the will, and the only one you may just want to look at if you even want to get into that detail is if it's being transferred while the owner is still alive. Do you want to say that has to be a family member, do you want to get into how close that family member needs to be, or do we just want to say transfer to family member or next of kin or something like that? I think it would also be a lot of work for staff to try to figure out what the relationship was between the people.
And if it does say, or as a result of a will, then it covers.
Yeah.
I'd feel better about that.
That makes sense.
I also, I know that name change isn't on here, but I know that we received some concerns about name changes.
What do you mean?
Like if somebody gets to, well, I guess that would be with a divorce, but say somebody changed their name, you know, or changed their name back or changed. Or if.
Diesel Manhood.
Yeah, exactly, I'm okay with that, too. Sorry, I know that wasn't one of the.
No, but I, I think.
I know that that was one of the concerns that was out there.
You know, what might also fall in there is closely held company, you know, somebody for tax purposes, they're they're putting it up for one entity.
To another. We've got some exemptions in the RETT ordinance. Shannon, did you look at those when you were doing this list? You know, that, there is that kind of an exemption, transferring of an entity from one to another.
Where it's, where it's closely held, it's, it's similar ownership.
That might be the language just to use in general, is that RETT language we have. Okay, so everybody's good with Steph working on this piece? Okay, how about fractional properties, so, you know, a handful of people own its quarter shares or eighth shares and one person sells, I mean.
I, this, this one is tougher to me because I think just a lot of those issues that we've been reading about with companies coming in and sort of orchestrating these timeshare properties, this one makes me a little more nervous, like it might be one part of a bigger conversation we might need to have. And I'm not sure that I feel comfortable just slipping it into the ordinance in two weeks. I'm perfectly happy to look at it in depth, but I do feel like this is one part of an, possibly a bigger issue.
I agree with Jelly.
Yeah, I agree with that, I'd like some more time.
Absolutely.
Exemption for properties within, let's take these as two different things, active building permit first and then homes under contract, so active building permit.
How would you prove that that active building permit was intended to be a short-term rental?
You can't.
So we just say that all active building permits right now can have a short-term rental license?
I would be more specific, just to your point, Aaron, is I would say any building permits that were active from the work session when we first started talking about this, what, three weeks ago? Until Tuesday night, you know, when we passed first reading. And it would be valid for, it would be a placeholder for a license that would be valid for eighteen months.
Okay.
I also think it should add to the twenty-two hundred.
Right.
So raise the twenty-two hundred by however many, I think they're sixty-some or something like that.
That's how many active building permits we have?
Raise that number.
Like, I don't know, six, sixty-five to eighty, except for my answer.
Why would we raise the number?
Compromise? We heard a lot of people say Tuesday, they wanted us to raise the numbers, it's, uh. I guess that's the only way I could put it.
How many homes are under, well, we won't know how many homes are under contract. I mean, I.
Yeah, and I feel the same way about homes under contract, same period of time if they went under contract prior to.
How long does it take for a home to go into contract?
Tuesdays, maybe. Six, on average, probably.
Jim, how long, if you don't mind me asking, how long, I mean, how long does it take to go under contract?
Well, that's a market condition, right, so if you price it appropriately in this market right now, you're under contract.
Okay, so.
And then right now title companies are, are maxed out, they're asking for forty-five days minimum to close.
Okay.
So I would say it's a sixty-day process right now.
But just to be under contract for the purposes of this legislation, somebody could theoretically get under contract within a week, okay?
In a day.
Okay, thank you.
Date you proposed?
I would say for, for the cons, real estate contracts, for, for building permits, I'd give them eighteen months. For real, for real estate contracts, I would give them six months to buy their licenses, to complete the sale and have the new owner buy the license. And I would have whatever's under contract prior to our meeting Tuesday night, this, two nights ago.
On Tuesday's first reading or?
Yes.
I'm a little confused.
So Dick, I'm sorry, I missed the timeframe.
For building permits, I would say anything, any active building permits during the period of between the work session and, and Tuesday's meeting, so that three-week period, I think there were three.
You're locking it, you're proposing to lock it in and just those.
The building permit, so.
Just those two weeks?
Anything.
Anything before that, you're, why are you saying two weeks, aren't you saying anything before Tuesday?
Well, I mean, a building permit stays active until they get a CO.
Yeah, so it's, you're saying anybody that pulled a building permit prior to first reading is really what.
That's what, really.
That's still active, sure, yeah, anything, it built, that, anybody pulled a permit that's still like, give them eighteen months to complete the building, make the sale, new owner, get their license.
So it's not, on the other hand, is what you're saying.
And both of them, both the, the real estate contracts and the building permits, I'd like to add to the twenty-two hundred.
Right.
Whatever that number is.
And, and for real estate, are you also proposing contracts that went under prior to Tuesday's reading?
Yes. Anything that's currently under track, under contract prior to Tuesday's meeting? Or up until Tuesday?
Up until the twenty-eighth.
Yeah.
No, the fourteenth, to this past Tuesday's meeting.
I mean, I would say the twenty-eighth.
Ousing, we were proposing that it be, and this, you know, this gets convoluted, but we were proposing that it be anything under contract up until the time that it takes into effect.
So all the way till.
All the way to November?
Second.
And that way it's consistent with when the cap goes into place, so everything takes effect on that day.
I'm okay with that. You're proposing for both building permits and?
No, no, I think you're, I think what's, building permits don't, aren't going to be like real estate contracts, I mean. Okay, people that had, there are people that are concerned that have active building permits, you've heard from them, right? That's, and I think that won't have their CO prior to this coming into effect. But.
So building permits prior to nine fourteen, under contract as of November first?
When the ordinance goes into effect, which is.
Or when it goes into effect, the second, okay, as of. Okay.
Eighteen months for the building permits and six months for the real estate contracts.
That's pretty fair. Have them in the works.
Trying to be fair.
No, I.
It's great.
I, this, I mean, I do, I certainly understand the thought process here, but I'm just wondering about unintended consequences as far as like real estate in the next month and a half. And maybe it doesn't matter, but this isn't the way I pictured it, and so now, now I'm having a hard time thinking through what kind of consequences we're gonna have, and I mean, not, you know, talking to any realtors to get their input, I feel like is a little bit
We can put this in and then we can delete it at second reading also. I mean, if you, if. I mean, if you, if, you know, I mean, as we, as we vote on wha- whatever the legis, the second reading is, you know, you can just say, I've talked to a lot of people, this isn't going to work for me, let's, can we?
I mean, disregarding panic buying, when people are just trying to just getting in there under the gun. I think there, there are a lot of legitimate cases where people had a thought, whole, future homeowners had a thought it was going to be, the, the marker was going to be one way. And then, and Tuesday, next week from next Tuesday, things have changed. So I think it's kind of fair to, you know, to kind of lease, let them purchase their property under the same circumstance that they're, that they assumed they were when they either pulled the permit or bought the property or were under contract. So yeah, I'm, I'm okay with this. I, 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 I do think it, it will be, there will be some, some issues that we've asked you. This is just, you know, they're just kind of hedging the bet and the panic buying and whatnot, but I think we can always amend this thing. So yeah, I, I think I'm, I'm with Dick and uh, pretty much how Shannon rephrased it.
I need more time on the under contract part, but I think the active building permit, that's a no brainer. I mean, people invested a lot of money, there's contracts with building contractors, so active building permit, I'm fine till the ordinance goes into effect.
I'm fine with the active building permit um, too. I, I think that's a good compromise. I, I agree with the other side with the contract. I wonder if there's a compromise there, like I, I understand that November second is the deadline for everything else, but that's a whole month of if there is panic buyer, or, again, we haven't talked to realtors. I'm, I'm wondering if it, if there is some kind of compromise in between where it's, you know, end of October instead, so there isn't another month of it. I don't know if that is helpful or if that's a possibility.
You mean end of September?
Or end of September.
Well.
Sorry, sorry, yes, end of September, sorry about that. End of September. Or, you know, second reading, I, but I don't know, I don't know if that's a, if that feels better.
Dennis?
Uh, absolutely, yes, for um, building permit. And I don't mind taking a little bit more time, but I'm, right now I'm fair with uh, with under contract as well.
To November sixth second or an earlier date?
I'm good with November second.
Yeah, and I'm good with L. Shannon restated both of them.
Okay, so November second, November second, not November second, November second, not November second.
I still need more time.
Okay, and I'm okay with November second also, so.
I'll put it in.
Okay. Uh, and then the final one on this is this thing about um.
What about, are they going to add to the twenty-two hundred? Do we?
I'm not in favor at this time. Me neither.
So they're not adding to.
Um, and then the ten thirty.
How did that go? Did we have four? I heard.
He said no.
Uh, Jeffrey said no.
What was this? You, what's?
Adding to twenty-two hundred, the permits and the contracts adding to the twenty-two hundred cap.
We're guessing.
Question is, do you want to, do you want to make the cap a little bit bigger?
Yeah, what do you think?
I mean, there's what, sixty-some building permits, we know that. We don't know what, how many real estate, but I can't imagine.
I don't know if those building permits will want, even want to pull a license.
Right.
Like some of those, some of those uh huge homes, you know, in your neck of the woods, you know, those people so rich, they don't want to rent it to anybody.
Who knows?
Yeah, so, all right.
Then the uh, you know, in the real estate contracts, I, I don't know, I'm guessing it can't be more than building permits, so we're talking hundred and fifty max. So I think it, worst case scenario or best case scenario, however you look at it, it would be go from twenty-two hundred to twenty-three fifty, and I, I personally just think that's important to, to just show some movement.
I can live with that.
For the community that wanted that. I don't think it's going to have a significant impact on what we're trying to accomplish.
So then at the end of the day, we don't know what the cap is, it's just the cap plus whatever's under contract and.
Well, we will know by.
November second.
Well, the, when the, when the building permit ones.
Oh, that's right, it has to be.
But it, it's a quantified number. We know how many are under contract, so we know what the maximum is.
So then wouldn't it behoove? I don't know, it kind of feels like, so everybody under contract, if they get a short term rental license, whether they want one or whether they'll use it or not, that'll still add to the pool. And it will never come back out.
But full disclosure, remember, we're gonna, we have every intention to increase fees.
Yeah.
How much, we don't know yet.
But once.
We're studying it and we have an intention to, which might make people think twice about just getting placeholder, you know, placeholder licenses.
Once that number, but what you're saying though, as, as far as I understand, say it's a hundred and fifty, but say only fifty of those people really want to use their licenses, we're still at twenty-three fifty, right?
In my mind, it's however many get a license within the deadlines that we've identified, six months for real estate, eighteen months for construction.
It would be.
Drop that license later on, those numbers are still in the pool.
If they get a license, that's how I feel, yes. We, that is our give to with, with the people saying they want us to raise the number, so we're raising a number by that much is what I, what I'm proposing.
I would rather, well, first of all, I'm not, I'm, I'm voting no on the give, but if we were to do a give, I'd rather it not in that way so that we're not encouraging falsely, yeah, kind of encouraging people to get licenses, just to have a license, just to grow the pool, right? See what I'm saying?
They're going to do that, they're going to do that anyway.
Yeah, but this is giving them incentives.
It's a finite number.
I, I think our increased fees are going to be in place by then, so I think that'll give them pause. But whatever, I don't want to argue.
But I also, I also don't know when, I mean, I don't know the timeline for increased fees, I mean.
I don't think any, but, no, none of us.
We intend to have it done by the first of the year. I mean, it depends.
But not by November second, so if people are under contract, they won't be incurring those fees, right?
They, it's when they get their license.
But everybody, everybody renews in January, so whether they get a license tomorrow or whether they got it on January second, they're going to renew in January.
Right.
So I think to Dick's point is just that, that what hopefully we'll have the fee structure in place. And people who are just sitting on licenses, just buying them up because they're afraid not to will at least consider whether it's financially.
Yeah.
Sense. And if it doesn't, then hopefully those funds will just help with.
Yeah.
I.
Employee housing.
I guess I'd just rather be purposeful with the number instead of allowing the market to.
I agree completely with that.
Just to do, you know.
Well, we know the top number, so I guess we need to decide whether we're comfortable with twenty-three fifty or not.
Where did, so twenty-three fifty is just your assumption that we won't have more than one.
Realtors out here, anybody guess how many are under, how many contracts are out there? Can you look, Jim?
There were eighty-eight sales in the last thirty days.
Thanks, Todd. I mean, really, the, the question that Dick's posing is do you want to, do you want to raise the cap to twenty-three fifty or not? That's really what you're saying.
Sure, to accommodate these placeholders.
Right, or do we leave the cap at twenty-two hundred and just allow these to do what's going to happen naturally with the attrition? This will just raise the final number that need, that attrition needs to to pull down, either through the fees or, you know, whatever. Um, or, or sales or, or whatever.
A compromise would be to do every, what Dick is saying in, as far as building, building permitted under contract, but keeping the number twenty-two.
We're good, that, yeah, that's what I'm saying. Now, one thing, one thing you have to consider too with this under contract, a lot of these properties that they're buying that are under contract already have licenses potentially. So then maybe doesn't raise that number, that whole hundred and fifty anyway.
Seeing as how fifty percent of them all have.
Right.
Anyways.
Rick, I didn't hear you.
I see, he said that a property they're buying may already have a license. I said, seeing as how fifty percent of them have licenses, it's pretty good odds that it has a license.
Thank you.
And really, should this just be for, for properties that current, are currently listed also?
I'm, I'm.
I mean, that's what I'm, those are the unintended consequences that I'm talking about. It's like, I just don't feel like we have a good grasp on that. On what could happen and just guessing about how many have a license, how many may or may not be under contract or sold, or what the purpose is, just seems like a lot of guessing. So if we are going to go forward with this, I would propose that we keep the cap at twenty-two hundred because that's the number that we've thought about, that we've really been dealing with, that people have had time to process um, on both sides of this issue, because there are lots of people who have wanted a lower cap than that as well, don't forget. So if we're going to do the building permits and the contracts, um, I would be, I would be okay with that if we keep it at twenty, if we keep the cap at twenty-two hundred.
I agree.
Yeah, I'm with, I'm with Kelly on that.
Yeah, I'd like to keep the cap where it is and allow flexibility during this.
And um, under contract and these are just for properties that are currently listed for sale?
No, with the for sales, it's a little tougher for me. I feel like we've been so transparent during this process. And if we change it to under contract till November second, I think we're going to have unintended consequences to the market and it's working.
Currently listed properties would prevent that though.
Yeah.
Like Eric's suggesting.
Starting from today, currently listed.
Well, it's
For us.
No, it, it, it's very easy to identify when a cut, when a home goes under contract. When it gets listed or how it gets listed, you know.
I think we just go with under contract.
If you want to set a date that's
Yeah, that's.
By a certain date. I mean, everybody, anybody that's buying a home now or looking to buy a home, probably ought to knows what's going on.
Right.
There are probably some that may have been under contract that haven't closed, that people are concerned, we have heard from realtors that said, you know, that, but.
I'd feel more comfortable with under contract as a second reading.
Okay.
Under contract by September twenty-eighth.
Okay, okay. Um, and then the ten thirty-one exchange rules, I think there's still some.
Eric.
Yeah.
I, I think we could quickly deal with this one if we, if you exempt ten thirty-ones if required to comply with applicable law.
Okay.
Yeah.
Since, since we really don't know what.
What, what the deal is right now. Okay, I'm fine with that. I, I mean, yeah.
We don't have any idea of how many ten thirty-ones are out there.
I talked to Tim Case yesterday.
He said if you get five in a year, that's.
Okay, that's, that's what I thought.
He said there's just not that many.
I wasn't sure if there were secrets.
He talked to his, I, I called him to ask, you know, what he knew about it. It's very vague. I mean, if investment property to investment property doesn't necessarily mean there needs to be a, a license on it. It's still just an investment property, so there, the language is fairly um, it's fairly gray, so, but I also don't want to get, you know, too hung up on something that's not going to have a effect either way. Okay, that covers those four. Do you want to talk, do you want me to talk about the tourism core idea?
Well, I, yeah, I think it's probably the biggest potential change we could be looking at in the future.
Okay, so yesterday took a look at, so the, the town is broken up into how about forty-seven, forty-nine different land use districts. And we use those land use districts through the planning code in order to uh, figure out what goes where. You know, the historic district has a, a separate overlay on top of it, but you know, for instance, land use district thirty-nine, which is at the base of the ski area uh, has language that talks about you know, where it is, acceptable land uses and intensity, it gives you your units per acre. There's architectural, building height, setbacks, circulation. There's all, all kinds of things that the town then uses as a, this is sort of the underlying premise of the planning code, is a land use district map. So I started to think that one of the difficulties with a tourism core that um, a lot of people asked for during our last meeting was I mean, what are, what are we going to do? Walk up Four O'Clock Road and say that building's good, that building's not, that's virtually impossible. But through the, through the land use district guideline map, we already have we already have zones that have been set aside for certain uses. So for instance, for instance, district twenty-three uh, which sits.
Right in the middle.
Right in the middle there, that the sort of desired character and function, multifamily residential uses, and these uses are allotted intensity appropriate to their proximity to the ski area base. Most of the, the uh, or actually all of the ones that are highlighted on the map in the, in the red hash, so it'd be twenty, twenty-one, twenty didn't get hatched, but it should be twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, thirty-nine and forty, all have language high intensity residential use near the ski lifts. They all have some immediate ski and ski out convenience. They all have some kind of language, provide a bed base in close proximity to ski facilities. All the language on all of these have something that related to the ski to the ski. Their location either lifts or, or a ski run. So my thought was, if we were going to think about a tourism core, which we cannot do before the second reading, by the way, this is going to take more thought than, I mean, I, I did this pretty quickly yesterday. This could be a potential overlay district that we could do that relates directly back to town code. So there's no real guesswork about, you know, why didn't you, why wasn't my building in, why is this one in? Well, because this is the way that the town was laid out. And this, this makes, at least it makes sense to my mind. One of the other nice things about this is we can get away from we can get away from the exempt properties language. All of the exempt properties that we have talked about all sit in one of these districts. So we could do the overlay and, and just have overlay. The only thing that you would allow in these districts is a, is a, an owner could purchase an STR license when they buy a property. That would be the only difference. It would still. I mean, first of all, our licenses aren't transferable currently, so you wouldn't make it as a transfer, but we could somehow redo that. Here, here's the harder part. You'd have to redo the bath is really what you'd have to do because the, that, that twenty-two hundred number would actually have to become smaller and the exempt number would have to become bigger. And I wouldn't call them exempt anymore either, it'd be overlay district. The overlay district has X amount. Everything else has X amount. That's why this is going to take longer, but I wanted to introduce this as a potential a potential idea to create a tourism overlay district.
And for the benefit of the public, do you have ten in there because I read, you know?
Because, so.
The difference.
Land use district ten.
I just wanted, I think it's important that people hear sort of why it's different, because it's still over here on the side and.
Primary function of district ten is to allow development of diverse housing types, thus providing greater opportunity for the permanent resident.
Right.
I mean, if we're going to go down this road and we're going to use the language and hear about skiing, then we use the language for everybody.
Right.
So that, that's how I came up with this.
It seems a lot cleaner, it seems a lot cleaner, because I was thinking, you know, could, I was, I'm in favor of the whole four o'clock uh, exemption or whatever, but, you know, I thought maybe within fifty yards of a ski lift or a ski run. But this seems to be a lot more quantifiable and defined, so.
It also picks up some areas like the Columbine Circle area, which is obviously was built
For that.
For that.
Yeah.
Um, Timber Trail, which is land use forty, which was more recently built as ski and ski out. Land use district thirty-nine, so just saying four o'clock.
Yeah, I'm hip.
Leave some of these out. So this is actually four o'clock in parts of Ski Hill also, so I, I, I just want you guys to take some, you know, time over the next week or so to look at this, think about it.
And we're going to get the numbers of the existing permits in, in, in these areas now, so we know.
I mean, we have, we have a map that has it, but it's really very confusing. I just, I have, I haven't had time to look through it yet.
It does show you that there are some large numbers of licenses, obviously, right, that exists within those areas.
Can we also look to see how many long, you know, long-term rentals, residential, that sort of thing? Is that possible to see?
We have no idea. We don't require a long-term rental to file any type of a license with this.
No.
No.
I love how it would get rid of the non-exempt definition, um, we're using the existing tools we have with the land use guidelines. And then, um, I mean, it makes sense, like the four o'clock group, like had very compelling arguments. And looking at those areas, not going building by building and what was said in this planning document. Makes a lot of sense, but, yeah, we need a little more time just to iron out this idea. But I like it.
Everybody else okay with the staff sort of looking into this more?
Absolutely, uh, you know, conceptually, I think this is a great approach, I, it is more complicated. I also think we need to do it in a trans, transparent manner, so it should be a new ordinance with a work session. Two readings in the period to give the, the.
Dick, my guess would be that this would be such a, a change that we would probably repeal the other one. And create a new one, so that process would happen.
Yeah, I just think we need to have a long enough process to help the community understand what we're trying to do, give them a chance to weigh in. Because, I mean, we've got more, more, um, town limits to the north that we also would probably wanna look at as well.
None of them have scary language in it, just so you know. This is all, this language is directly, I mean, I looked through some of them, I did not read through all, again, this was really. Almost like napkin math I was doing while I was at work yesterday.
I mean, it's really, this is relevant to the, many of the comments that we heard. These areas were created for this, people were quoting our land use districts and verbiage in there and, uh, so.
Well, I like where we're going, and I also think we've been asked to take a look at possible caps on. Our current exempt, which would go away, so I, I think that would also open that discussion as well. Where we look at, you know, addressing some of those areas as well.
I'm okay discussing it, um, it does make me really nervous. Having zoning like this, um, when it comes to residences, it brings up a lot of equity questions. And I know that there's been a history of residential zoning that has not ended well and equitably, so. I'm glad that this is a separate conversation that we can talk about later.
But what I think, one thing that I'm hopeful for in this conversation, and not that this is a done deal, but. I do think that, um, what could benefit from this is that it would help, uh, licenses sort of migrate. To where they belong and out of more neighbor, more traditional neighborhoods where. Year round, so I do think that, um, that could be a potential benefit.
I think so too, I just think that the converse of that is that residential will be migrating out of these zones too. And that's something to, to talk about, what does that look like, what does that mean for people? So that you have a certain type of usage in residential neighborhoods versus another type of, you know, so we're talking about types. So that's what makes me feel a little uncomfortable.
We get extrapolate, but you know, you're not gonna know quantifiably, but, you know, you like, just take, say four o'clock. If we find out how many units we're talking about, and how many units have a current license. We might be able to kinda make a guesstimate about, uh, the percentage of those that might be just second homes that people don't rent out. Or in perhaps how many are actually long-term rentals, so I mean, it's gonna be guesswork, but I think. We'll have more information down the road than we do right now.
Right, right, yeah, if we could get the total number of units and then the total number of short-term rentals, yeah, you're right, we could extrapolate. What's not a short-term rental, right, that's pretty, that's pretty easy.
I think the thing that everyone has to be aware of, um, is that. We, I mean, we had this conversation at the county, like five years ago, zoning. And it's a very tough discussion, because now all the people who are in ten, lots of people. Are gonna have a conversation about you're devaluing my property. So even though we've heard from realtors that this actually, you know. There's no proof that this devalues a property, and hopefully it doesn't, and hopefully we're doing this and maintaining the integrity and the brand of Breckenridge. But it's still gonna be a conversation that comes up, yeah.
Well, like I said, this is the beginning of a discussion about a, something that a lot of people that stood up on Tuesday asked for was the, what I thought was the.
I, I, I'd like the approach where we're using language in the incur, in the current zoning, you know, I, I think that is a. Great approach I hadn't thought of previously, so I appreciate you doing this, Eric.
Great first start, for sure, I know that we'll probably get some questions about the core of town, even though it doesn't have ski in, ski out language in it. But the answer will be, we don't know yet.
Couple of weeks, go through all the land use districts and read, you know, you don't have to read the whole thing, just read the, that first. Paragraph is desired character and function, it pretty much lays out, I mean, when I said on, when I said on planning. We used to use the land use district map for, as we did stuff, as the Highlands came through originally. I mean, the, the lugs were what we used for everything, you know, we've sort of settled into a pattern now in town where things are generally. Defined by your neighborhood, but that, that language is still, I think, very relevant to everything. That, that we do, you know, as far as development in this town, so. Go through all of them, make sure I didn't, you know, like I said, I didn't read everything, I just didn't have time, but going forward, I, you know, I'm gonna sit down and. Do everything, so, alright, so we'll continue.
Just as part of that conversation, can we have Planning Commission as part of a work session prior to doing this, sit in with us and talk to us about this?
Do whatever, if that's what you want.
I mean, I just think they see a lot of applications, they see what's going on out there. And Eric has a ton of background in that, but then, you know, the rest of us don't have as much.
And as we discuss this in a separate conversation, we're gonna get a lot of great input from the community as we have. So these property management companies, they know, have a general idea of who lives full-time in certain areas, so. We would love your continued input.
And what we'd like to do is do this as work session, and then a first and second reading if we develop some plan.
Well, I will commit to, um. They're getting, if you want a meeting with the Planning Commission first in a work session to discuss this concept, that we'll look at getting that done.
I mean, do we need to meet with them, or can they just have a look at this on their own with the, you know, Julian, Julian knows what we're talking about.
You know, the Planning Commission could talk to staff, staff could, you know, kinda interpret the, take out the bigger words and talk to us.
So why don't, why don't we let, why don't we just ask the Planning Commission for.
Input.
Input, instead of doing a joint meeting with them, that's always impossible to arrange.
It's kinda windy, too.
One thing I wanna do, um, I think Kelly wanted, uh, have raised this issue. Is to try to put some timelines on these things, so that the community gets an idea of, uh. What our plan is, uh, when to look at these, so. Is this something that the council would like to make a priority and try to get addressed in the next, uh. You know, forty-five days, at least start that work session discussion, I do know that we won't be, obviously, the twenty eighth will be dealing with second reading of the. Current ordinance, the twelfth is pretty much a budget meeting, so that's very difficult for us to do. And we might be able to do the twenty eighth and bring it back and start a work session discussion on this. Either the twenty eighth or the first meeting in November, I'll commit to that we would start a, uh.
So it's the, the twenty sixth actually is.
I'm sorry, the twenty sixth.
Twenty sixth or the ninth.
I, I'd love to do the work session on the twenty sixth. And then, you know, see where it goes.
That's also, uh, I believe that's winter break.
It is, that is winter break for the school district. Uh, no, it's not, winter break ends on the, on the. Is it the twenty-fifth? Why don't I have this in? The twenty-sixth. It does go through the twenty-sixth, okay.
No, no, the council was gonna be gone at that time.
I have no children.
But at least, uh, people know that we'll be getting back to that quickly, twenty-six or one.
Okay, so, other things that are on the list, let's see, we talked about the core. Uh, system for tracking and potentially limiting the number of licensed person, company, LLC can have.
Should we limit, you know, people to no more than two licenses?
This is another one of those things that's been done in other.
But how do you even do that, I mean, like, I could have an LLC, my daughter, who's three, could have an LLC, I mean, anyone can have.
Like, you know.
I think it's worth discussing in, in a, not this for, not, not for this second reading, but. I would put it on the agenda to discuss in our next round. Because you're right, I mean, there's, there's more to think about on this. But conceptually, I think it's worth talking about.
Okay, so we'll put that on the. Future discussions. Okay, Tourism Core, we talked about, should staff to value a weighted tiered license system may not include separate caps for each tier.
So, yeah, obviously, we, some places have a, a separate license for an owner occupied. Residents, so if you're a full-time resident, but you wanna Airbnb a bedroom to supplement your income, that would be a different license. That would not be part of this cap. And there can also be a license that is very limited in the number of days you could actually STR. In a year, like a, a, a short-term, short-term, you know, somebody that only does the two weeks around Christmas or something like that.
Would we do the same thing, or would we have a separate, um, designation for someone that has, like I say, a lock-off apartment, you know?
As long as they're occupying them.
Yeah, they, they live there, but they have kind of an adjacent, like a, like a garage apartment, something that they STR. So it's not in their actual abode, but it's connected to their house.
I mean, I, I think you wanna be careful that you're not doing something with ADUs, because. You know, when you start talking about a different, an actual lockup or something, I start thinking ADU, and we're really trying to make. ADUs more deed restricted, right? So I don't, I'm not sure what that would be if it's not an ADU.
Well, I, um, like, like in my place, you know, I long-term, I have a basement apartment, and I long-term it, you know, it's a lock-off.
Consider an ADU?
I have no idea, what is it, I need, I thought an ADU was like a garage apartment.
Not necessarily.
I don't know what we called them in, uh.
Right.
So it's only, so you're like grandfathered in, you're still an ADU, but you don't have the same rules, cuz you didn't build it in the last three years. We have a long way to go with enforcement before we do all these complicated tiers and different, like. I think if we can get an enforcement team here, who's really working with us and who's ensuring that ADUs that were built. Recently and have a, you know, some sort of a deed restriction on them are being used properly and others aren't. And we're able to react to neighbors that have noise issues and until, and three, you know, we're enforcing the three strikes and you're out policy. Until we're doing a great job with that, I think keeping the licenses in a little more simple structure would really. Benefit people who are impacted by short-term rentals.
I don't disagree, but the one simple thing I think we could do is allow people to rent a room in their home.
In their own, that's, that's.
Yeah, I would, I honestly, I would.
But for a short period of time?
I don't feel like it needs to be, I feel like if it's in your primary residence. So you've declared it your primary residence, you're a voter, you're not declaring. What's that?
Owner occupied.
Yeah.
By primary residence, then you can rent a room in your home. Not an ADU, you can rent a room.
Still be paying the same fees as everybody else, right?
I would, I want them.
Yeah, because we pay per bedroom.
If we do tier fees by bedroom, then it's automatically.
It's up to you, but, I mean, if those fees could.
I mean, this might take more discussion, so it might not go in second reading, but I think it should be on the list for discussion.
I'd like to be able to have a little bit of time to talk to staff on how we would manage that and how we would know. Right, that it was that situation and not a lock-off, you know, that.
What gives us the opportunity to inspect it?
Yeah, we'd have to have the people in place.
If they get a license.
I think, I just, I fear that that's a direct impact workforce housing, cuz traditionally, that's how people lived up here. Is they got a room in somebody's house, or they got, you know, and so I feel like. Sure, I certainly wanna work with people who are living here and, you know, making it work financially, but they can long-term rent.
Yeah, but you know, it's like, it's a different world, if you know, if you, you own a place and you have a couple of kids and you wanted to free your costs over Christmas by. Getting some stranger in your house, you know, and also I think the fact that you are inviting people into a existing home, it, it, it's not gonna be. Three hundred days a year, you, you do it on occasion, so.
And I'm with Jeffrey on that, and why I think I'd be open to that, but with a certain day limit.
More discussion, I, all I'm advocating is if we put it on the discussion list.
Yeah, 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 I'm hip.
Yeah, I'm.
Okay with that.
Cuz we, we've all got examples, I have a neighbor who's, has two kids, well, one's out of college and living in another community, and one's in college and. He's created a little studio apartment downstairs, and then when his kids come home, he never rents it, I mean, it's just rented. You know, when the kids are gone.
Sounds like an illegal ADU. Sounds a lot like an illegal ADU.
What was the name? I think this is a good path to go down at, at a work session, as we, we really do need to talk about that, but to Kelly's point. The first thing that we noticed when Airbnb and VRBO became a thing is we started losing units. That were traditionally long-term rentals in people's houses, I mean, that was the big, that was the first big. Big effect of Airbnb and VRBO that we talked about up here as we started to lose, lose units. That was the first part of it, so I don't. I sympathize, I get it, I think we need to really vet this thing prior to just pulling the trigger on it, so.
I agree.
So add that to the ever-growing list.
And the other thing that can be part of this that we've never even brought up is, do they need a green sheet? They need an inspection.
See, and that, that needs to be part of that compliance thing that we've been talking about too, Dennis. So, for instance, if you do anything to your, like, I wanna do something downstairs, I wanna add a, I wanna add a wall downstairs. I go to the building department, I get a thing called a green sheet, and you have to go with the green sheet to. All the organizations in town that have something to do with building, you go to the, you go to the planning, planning signs off. You go to the fire department, fire department signs off, you go to sanitation, sanitation signs off. And once you get the signatures, then you go back, and I also would have to go to the liquor license, because I have a liquor license, but in this case. You would then, you'd go through, well, listen, sanitation is, is really affected by this stuff. Fire department, we, a sign off is really important because of life safety thing. Building department needs to do it to make sure that a unit is not illegal, so that's what a green sheet is.
Sure, a bedroom has an egress window, so people can get out in the case of fire.
Doesn't take long to go through, I mean, it depends, but that would have to, that's gonna have to be part of this compliance piece. Because you can't, I mean, we can't do it without adding staff.
That, that's why I think we need more discussion.
Yeah, but put that, the green sheet we talked about a couple times, I think is very important.
I agree.
Because I think, you know, you just, you, you never know how many, um, just units through town in general just don't have. The proper access and stuff, so. Um, okay, there's a couple more things on this that I'm assuming will be things we wanna add just as talking points, one is, uh, do we wanna allow? A license, um.
Is an incentive for, I mean, could, somebody that wants to get a license, but they can't get one because the cap's in place, but you could trade one for one. For, if they're a long-term rent for six months, they could get a six-month STR. You know, or a year, whatever that period is, so there's some incentive program to. Uh, allow somebody to get one if the cap, if, you know, if there's not one available under the cap or over the cap.
That one for sure, cuz that could have a really good beneficial impact for workforce housing.
Yeah, just be worried about taking, giving the law, the workforce housing and then taking it away, and how, what that, what does that look like?
Well, I mean, but this sort of goes back to the guy who said, like, let's start building dorms, you know, my, the people who work with me. Or work for me would love to just come in and live in a place for the season and then leave, and. So I just think it's worth a conversation, cuz that, that, you know, comment is out, out there, that we just need some seasonal housing.
Yeah, I think if we do that on a, on a seasonal basis, so it'd be by year, not by, so you don't. You don't workforce it for two years, and then you get two years of rental, it would be six months, six months. I think.
Within the same year.
I think would be, yeah, in the same year or something like that.
And it'd be a lot easier to track, because then you'd have the worker come in, you know, sign off that they're living there, and then when they moved out, then they could.
Yeah. I talked with Dave DePeters that we would call that the NRO exemption.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, that's how. Our O used to do it. NRO used to get homes that were occupied in the winter time.
Right.
That then people would say, not be here in the summer and they would give it to the NRO. So that, that is currently missing, which is why you had to beg the ski area for NRO housing.
I didn't beg them.
You begged them, don't you? Okay. And then the final one on the list for today is. Uh, would you like to, um, talk about. Allowing licenses to be added as a couple licenses instead of waiting for the, for the hard cap. Every two or three licenses that vanish, would you like to allow one? The next, somebody on the list to get it or for every three or five. Dick shaking his head, no.
I, I mean, I would like to have incentives that would allow them to add licenses, like an ADU, deed restricted ADU or something like that. But I don't think, I mean, this is why we're doing this is to get down to the cap. So I don't think we need to make progress, go backwards, make progress, go backwards. So. But I think there are incentives that would make that happen that I'm very interested in talking about.
Not, and for me, not at this time. I mean, we're, especially where we're sitting right now, but that we could, a future council could always look at this and say, hey. We have, we can, we can move that balance.
Yeah, I agree with that. Maybe in the future to get movement.
Okay. So that, that's the memo. Anybody have any other?
Well, there's one, there's, actually I think, I mean, you do want to examine incentives. Like if somebody brings a deed restricted property to the table, would you allow them to get a license? So you do want to discuss that in the future. Uh, one other thing we heard that last bullet, Eric. Where a new property owner would be able to, I think somebody said, this is what you're ready to, right? If a new property owner has a fourteen day window to get a license.
Oh.
I mean.
You mean for the list? Well.
Yeah.
We, we originally talked about twenty, what did we say, twenty days?
Well, but this is, I mean, this is just going out and. Do it, right? I mean, if you're a new, that just means anybody has, could be eligible.
I mean, really, really what we're talking about is when we start getting to the list. The first person on the list, we need to have a defined period of time. And twenty days that we talked about originally is way too long. If you got to wait twenty days for, you know, if the first person on the list to get an STR. They got twenty days and they say no, and then twenty days and they, you know, you're talking about a long period of time. I, we need a short window because people will be paying attention to the list. So if Dennis Kuhn is first on the list, you know, I have five business days, I think is, is plenty of time to at least. Notify the staff that you want to pull a, pull that license. See what I'm saying?
Something that they would get notified of that they're next up? Or did they just have to pay attention?
Now, that would probably be an administrative rule.
Right.
One of our administrative rules that we have.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yes.
Did you get that? Yeah, this is, this other one's a different question, but I can't see.
That's not what we were talking, I mean, yeah.
I'm thinking base.
No.
Yes, we'd have to give people a heads up whenever they're next up so they know it's.
The list is going to be published, so people won't know where they are. I mean.
Yeah. The top five people should know.
Right. Okay. Anything else? I mean, it's a lot of work for the staff now, you know, we'll, we'll get through this next round of stuff. If the earlier things we've asked him to add into an ordinance and then. And then these other things will just start grinding through beginning potentially on the twenty sixth of October.
When are we talking about fees?
Uh, we're talking about fees as soon as the nexus study is done. I mean, everything's hinging on EPS and the nexus study.
Kelly and I have a follow-up meeting with them next week, Monday.
We do, fees are always worked into the budget process anyway. So, I mean, the timing is.
I mean, you have to adopt fee, these, this particular nexus would have to be adopted by ordinance. Just like the last ones were. So there is a process there, but there is, you will, nothing will go into place. Prior to the first of the year and, uh, but you will have an idea of what that nexus will be. And I think you'll have an idea of where the direction I think that we can propose within the next thirty days.
But we're on target for January first and that's when people buy their.
Uh, not necessarily.
Okay.
Because of that, we lose that second meeting in December. So. But what we would do, you know, take, depending on when it goes into effect, we, if, um. We would just, wouldn't allow anybody to renew their license, January one, we would hold off for thirty days or do it, you know, like February. First or something like that, if we knew that those, when those new fees would go into effect.
And not that we wouldn't let them renew their license.
We give them an extra month.
No, we would, we wouldn't allow them to.
Yeah, they would still be able to operate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To be a bonus.
They'd get.
Yeah.
So Eric, I do have one more thing.
Shannon's like, let me just head off this issue right here.
The end of last meeting, what we had talked about is we didn't do a very good job of making sure the public was aware of what we were doing. I think now that we've made some really good inroads as to concessions that we need to make sure that we get this word out. So that not only these people know that attended today, but everybody knows. Do we have a, do we have a plan for that?
Do. So, um, we're working with the PR company, with APR company and, uh, we'll put out a draft press release. It may not go out until Monday because we want to make sure we get it all right, but we'll push it out. In all the ways we have been to all the license holders and lodging company and SAVRM and all those folks as well as the news, uh, and on social.
This was a bad time to be without a PR person.
Yeah, well, it happened and.
Push it in Spanish.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Yeah. And, and we'll also, will we also promote all of our housing programs that we have in place? And reach out to the real estate community, asking them for help with, you know, buy downs, bringing us buy downs. Many are being very helpful right now.
Some not so.
But if we could be broader in that, you know, I, I think add that to the PR list is to have a, a, you know, a housing. Our, our housing in, um, efforts that are happening right now, really try to get that out there as well.
That will be included as well.
Awesome.
Will we have an update on landing locals at the next meeting or two?
We are trying to work in conjunction with the county to have something going out by mid-October. With, um, so that we have announced a, basically a grant program. For incentivizing long-term rentals. Uh, we haven't settled on exactly what that criteria is, you know, but it's going to be in the neighborhood of. Five to six thousand dollars a year for a one-bedroom with potentially another couple thousand for each bedroom added. So the, we're just fine tuning and looking at how, you know, the, who's, where's the clearinghouse located? Who's vetting those applications, who's coordinating the release of those funds and how they go out? Working with local, uh, either property, different property management companies and how then they would coordinate with the clearinghouse. And we know every, again, we know everybody's got. I mean, managed that would be ripe for this type of incentive program. So. We are, uh, working on that and we, our goal really is in October to get this thing launched. So before, right before the winter season.
Dick, anything?
Nope.
Eric?
No.
Kelly?
Um, the language in the ordinance, we had some comments about, you know.
Yep.
So like cleaning things up, maybe changing. I know that Q was a bit of a contentious statement.
Yeah.
Um, so are we gonna, do we need to talk about the changes that we're going to make here today? Or are you just going to make those and bring it for second reading?
Is Q the one that talked about the problems the STRs were causing?
Just the poses a real and imminent threat, which.
Yeah, I, that was obviously too broad. Uh, and what I had envisioned saying is that some, but not all. The STRs are causing those problems.
Okay. Well, I just thought if we could, um, work on that and then in H, we talk about that. The demands on local workforce housing inventory by conversion of long-term workforce and housing units from. Long-term to vacation rentals. But I would really be interested in adding to that, like the demand of, um. Increased or short-term rental, there's a, you know, a commensurate increase in employee needs or something like that. But I know we don't have a study that says that yet. So is that just something we're not going to?
Yeah, we, you know, we, the, the development code policy that we did, what was it, last year on the employee generation? I would be inclined just to leave that out of this and not. Keep this ordinance with employee generation. That's just my thought. One thing also I want to do is I, it was pretty clear to me. That a lot of folks didn't understand what this council and the previous councils have done with respect to trying to address the housing issue. And I was going to add a finding that in the last ten years, the town has done the following. Um, and I was going to work with staff to get that information. I just think that's important, uh, to point out.
Okay. Um, and then in F, where that we talk about that currently they exist throughout the town and. I think it says that they're primarily located in the town's historic district. And I don't know if we said that because that's the one residential neighborhood where they're primarily located. But if that's not what we meant, then that's probably a bit misleading since we seem to agree that most of the short-term rentals are located in. On the skier side. So I'm not sure if we could just clean up that language.
Maybe, maybe just take it out. I.
Could we take out the historic district entirely? It seems like an odd distinction that we're making. Cause we're also hearing about, you know, like the Highlands and, you know, all over.
I absolutely agree with that.
I think all mention of the historic district would be great.
Okay, anything else? Carol, no, Kelly?
I'd like to talk about, um. If the council wants to start the regular meeting earlier.
Oh, goodie.
Yes.
And if, you know, I, I have no idea if we're going to have five hundred people show up again and want to talk. But if you want to, you know, if we do, do you want to be here till midnight again? Or we have a pretty light work session, so we could probably. Probably I could look at starting the regular meeting at, at five thirty or maybe five. It makes it hard for you to eat before then.
Doesn't matter.
So how does that affect like public's coming? I mean, I know that we have, it's kind of difficult, no matter which way you slice it. But that's like bleeding into the workday.
Well, why don't we just say six then? Let's just, let's get an hour. An hour is fifteen people, roughly fifteen comments. That's about what we were doing was fifteen an hour.
That sounds great.
Thirty, sixty.
Could we arrange it so that we're working on other things between five and six or whatever? I'm, well, I mean, I guess that's assuming that the public, how about, could we do five thirty?
No, I see what you're saying. If we start the night meeting at five and we finish everything we need to do for the full meeting. So we don't, because we ended up staying another half an hour after the public left.
Yeah.
To do regu, if we have regular legislation. Well, excepted second reading, it has to go first. Doesn't matter.
There is, you could put legislative items. I mean, you could put your committee reports and we could rearrange the agenda, but when it comes to your legislative stuff, it's still. You're only, I mean, you're only going to have.
And if we need to hear from the BTO or from anybody else.
We don't need to hear.
That was canceled already for.
Yeah, you, I mean, you only got, you only got a total of four legislative items included in this. So.
They, those should go pretty quick anyway. Uh, how's, what, five, six? What do you guys think?
I think this was my best, my.
The earlier the better. Dick?
Yeah, you know, six is probably better just to keep it in the groove of what we've been doing.
Six.
Six. Six o'clock.
Regular meeting.
We're going to start the regular meeting on the twenty eighth at six P M.
Eric, is it fair to ask our community that if your whole family and as many of your employees as you can get to come speak have already spoken? Don't do that again.
Yeah, I don't think we.
That a lot where there's one, you know, but.
You know what? That's the, I mean.
They have a right to, but I mean, just be courteous and.
You know, I mean, the, the, out of the Colorado Verge statute, citizens show up a reasonable opportunity to be heard under such rules and regulations as the council may prescribe. We can ask that as a courtesy, but we can't expect.
Ask, it's not a requirement.
Anything else? Give you guys enough to. Want some more shit that want to come? All right. All right. Uh, thank you for coming, everyone. We appreciate it. Hi, Tom.
You guys grab a. Stone on the way out.